Good evening. You're welcome to the Bel Air Beach Candidates Forum. The candidates could come up and sit behind their lovely little name placards. We've been informed that Mr. Seraphin is isolating and will not be joining us tonight. I am Bill Johnson, and I'm president of the League Women Voters of North Pinellas County. Yes, membership in the League Women Voters is open to gentlemen as well as me. We are nonpartisan, and our goal is to assist in empowering voters and defending democracy. Bel Air Beach Municipal Election is going to be on March 15th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You must register prior to February 14th, prior to February 14th, in order to vote on the 15th of March. So go to votethelis.com to verify that you are registered. Vote by mail ballots are permitted without an excuse. Those who checked the box at the last general election should receive one this time. But to be sure, again, go to votethelis.com, and you can verify your request is on file. Vote by mail ballots will be sent to you sometime about February 1st. It's important for you to know that you will be voting for one of the two candidates for mayor, and you will be voting for three out of the six candidates for the council seats. Tonight, we have a very experienced forum moderator from the League Women Voters, Marty Falwell. And we have our timekeeper, Sue Cornet, and Tanya Landry has been helping us outside. Please turn off your cell phones. I'm going to do that right now with mine. And our goal is to hear from the candidates. Questions will be asked only by the moderator selected from those that you have turned in. In some cases, we have consolidated them or reformatted them somewhat. Questions have been screened to make sure that they are fair and without personal attacks. Of course, the views expressed are those of the candidates, not the League. And the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. All candidates have been invited to participate, but as I said, Mr. Seraphin is down here tonight. The timekeeper will notify the candidates at 30 seconds and 15 seconds, and then stop. The candidates will have a two-minute opening statement. And with that, I'll turn it over to our moderator, Ms. Fallow.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everyone. I always enjoy doing these candidate forums for the cities in Pinellas because it's a wonderful slice of small-town America. And without further ado, we will begin. The candidates will answer questions in alphabetical order, but will start with a different person each time. The mayor candidates will just alternate back and forth as far as people was supposed. So the first question is, you have your two-minute opportunity for a two-minute introductory statement. So, Mr. Gaddis.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for coming. My name is Dave Gaddis, and I've been serving on the council since 2019. I am the vice mayor of Bel Air Beach and represent our city on the Big C. I am a member of Leadership Analysis Class of 2022, and recently completed the final class with the Florida League of Cities Institute for Elected Municipal Elections. I am also vice president of engineering at Ditech, and have over 30 years' experience in information technology and project management. So why am I on the Big C? Despite what my opponent may have told you, I have never been in support of Bel Air Shore's shade ordinance. What should have been a few weeks of negotiations has now turned into two or more years of litigation. Unfortunately, it is the citizens of Bel Air Beach who continue to suffer from this lengthy and unnecessary lawsuit. I knew that the only way to begin repairing the damage was to remove the mayor from the Big C and by eventually unseating him as mayor. Since working with the Big C, I've been building relationships with neighboring communities up and down the beach, including Bel Air Shore. I firmly believe that if the Manzo lawsuit was dropped today, negotiations would resume, and a reasonable compromise would eventually be reached. If you look at the way our council meetings are ran today, it's no wonder that we rarely agree. Great leaders know that threats and intimidation gain little traction for compelling arguments. As your mayor, I will continue to be the voice of reason, and will work with the council to identify real problems, search for practical solutions, and reach genuine consensus for final decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manzo.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Bel Air Beach. Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Joseph Manzo. I am your mayor, and I've been so for the last three years. As many of you know, I'm an attorney. In my past life, I was a CPA and a business executive for Sony Corporation and Casio Corporation. I originally ran for mayor for this city because I saw a broken city. I saw broken infrastructure. I saw city management that thought that the citizens were the enemy. There was no citizen service. I saw a neglect for the finances. I saw a bloated bureaucracy. And in three years, I've cleaned all of that up. Our streets are being paved. Our valley curves are being fixed. The sewage project that was running down the street on Seventh Street, and I was told by the city manager was impossible to fix, I got it fixed with the county. A nearly $2 million project that cost us nothing. That was my hard work to make that happen. When I see what's happening with my opponent, I get sick to my stomach. What I'm seeing is tens of thousands of dollars being poured into a campaign from outside this city, and I have to ask myself, what do these people want? They're not doing this for free. They don't give a damn about how we run a council meeting. They have ideas on what they want to do. His political supporters have all favored short-term rentals and have voted for those short-term rentals. I spoke out when I was on the Big C for two years against short-term rentals. I'll never go to let short-term rentals come here, and I'm never going to let some mayor take away your beach rights. I run toward the problem, not away from it. When there was a meeting to solve the problem, Dave Gaddis stayed home. I went to the meeting. We gave him two months to settle it. They didn't do it. And I'm bringing a lawsuit, and if I win it, you win it. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm asking for three more years to continue to protect this city. I'm the only person with the ability and the backbone to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. In alphabetical order, the candidates for city council are Robin Aki. If I say this right. Aki.
Aki.
Aki. Pretty close.
Hi, everyone. I'm Robin Aki. I'm currently on the city council. I've had the pleasure and the honor to serve you for the last two and a half years. During the day, I'm a general surgeon. I specialize in care. I'm used to hard work. I'm used to resolving conflict as well as staying calm under pressure. All of these attributes have been used at many city council meetings in the past. I've often had to speak up and be the voice of reason between two screaming parties. I have no problem doing that. I have a very laid-back personality. I can get along with anybody. I'm willing to work hard. I like to explain it in a medical analogy. When I'm treating a patient, if I'm treating it with another doctor who I may not personally like, I'm going to put all that aside and make sure that we do the right thing for the patient. In this analogy, the patient is Bel Air Beach. I'm going to do whatever I need to do to get along with anybody up here so we get that done. I'm very objective in all my decisions. I don't make up my mind until I listen to all the arguments and the citizens, and then, based on that, I do what I feel is best for the city. I'm very consistent. I've often said on black and white, what we do for once, we do for the other. I don't play favorites. If this law applies to this citizen, then it should apply to all citizens. I'm very big on compromise. I'm often trying to find the middle ground to make things work. I will say that I am only one citizen of this city. So therefore, in my personal opinion, it is not the only one. I listen very closely to the citizens and use that in order to make my decisions. So if I'm reelected, I'd love to continue representing the city and the Bel Air Beach. I will not be influenced by outside cities. All my decisions are based for the residents that I represent, which is Bel Air Beach and only Bel Air Beach. So hopefully, I will earn your vote, and thank you very much to the League of Women Voters, and thank you guys all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Next is Lloyd Roberts.
Thank you very much. My name is Lloyd Roberts, and I'm probably the newest person to our wonderful city here on this group up here. So I want to read a couple of things, which I don't normally do, but I want you to get a full experience of what my experience is. So I graduated from Auburn University with a degree in civil engineering. While I was at Auburn, I was elected president of my fraternity. I'm a licensed state-of-Florida professional engineer, as well as a licensed general contractor with the state of Florida. My working career began with Slumber Day Wealth Services as a well-laundering engineer in the oil industry. Afterwards, we'd like to talk more about that. There's a lot of great stories and goes along with that. Also worked with Tennessee Valley Authority as a construction engineer at the Watts Bar Nuclear Power Plant. Worked with IBM for 10 years as an engineering scientific, sales, and marketing representative where I was elected president of my IBM Sales School. Worked for the city of Brooksville. I was the public works director there for a few years as well. And my final working experience was with Southwest Florida Water Management District, very well-known as SWIFMA, that most of you are probably familiar with. I was the general services director. They dealt mainly with construction and maintenance of all of our facilities in our four locations, and also responsible for the fleet management and acquisition of all of our vehicles and heavy equipment. Also, the last five years, I was the emergency management director for SWIFMA. While I'm in those positions, I gained a lot of experience in budgeting, leadership, engineering, construction, and RFP and RFP development. So why am I running? I came here to the city about two years ago. I attended several of the council meetings, and I came out completely embarrassed about how the meetings were handled and what went on. So I decided at that point that I'm going to do something about it and not just complain. So I'm running for city council, and my goal is to make Bel Air Beach a city that will all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jody Shirley.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for coming. I appreciate the participation from the city. I'm Jody Shirley. I've lived in this city for 22 years. My husband and I have raised two children here in the city, and I'm blessed and grateful to be part of this beautiful city. I have extensive background in commercial real estate development. I'm a licensed contractor and a licensed real estate broker. My office is nearby. It's a five-minute drive from my home. I was previously on council. And in my service on council before, I was able to establish long-term funding sources for our maintenance of our stormwater system, which has gone unmaintained for years. I'm a proponent of keeping in place our strategic plan and following it and referencing it. We rarely talk about that in council meetings. I like to keep my eye on the big picture and not get too tied down in the day-to-day operations. We have a city manager for that. My major focus is to continue on infrastructure improvements and to move forward with capital improvements. And they are all identified in the strategic plan already, just carrying forward what's been done in the past. If I'm elected to the city council, I hope to bring the stability back to the council. The city's become so divided. There's a level of hostility in every meeting, and I hope to see that and here with this new election. If you guys would consider voting for me, I would be honored. And I am available by phone, by email, if anyone wants to speak with me regarding any concerns you might have in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Linda Hathor Welch.
Hi. Thank you for coming tonight and giving us the opportunity to let you know why we're all here. Thank you to the League Women Voters for putting this on for us as well. A little bit about me. I lived in Atlanta my entire life in a neighborhood that was actually larger than Bel Air Beach. And when I was looking for a place to live, I wanted something similar to what I had been accustomed to, which was a lot of good zoning, a lot of planning and development, a lot of structure, everybody playing by the same rules and having those rules being enforced. And I lived all up in Bel Air Beach, even down the Naples, and I settled here. And when I got here, I got here during COVID, and I realized that this beautiful opportunity I had had been locked down and shut down. So in my work experience, what I would bring to city council is, come from a legal background. I'm not afraid of litigation. I don't think filing a lawsuit is the unforgivable sin. I can read financial statements and had a long career in banking finance in my own company. I also serve on the board for the Daughters of the American Revolution, which is the largest women's service organization. And so I know about giving back and trying to make a place better by being here. Happy to try to work with anybody on this council to try to get rid of this divisiveness that we have. It is a disappointment to move here, to live here, and to live in this beautiful sandbox. But we're not enjoying what we have here, so.
Thank you. My turn. Sorry. Mike Zabel.
Hi. I have over 39 years' direct hands-on experience in handling budgets and material in excess of millions of dollars, leading teams of hundreds, including those from multiple countries in their own forces. I also have experience working with FEMA and disaster response at the federal level. I'm a 26-year-old combat veteran in the US Navy, retiring as a captain. My last stateside tour was as deputy direct berrolotic and follow-up for the Navy Inspector General investigating senior Navy officials. I have an MBA in finance, master's in software engineering, including other advanced degrees from the National War College and the Army's Command and General Staff College. I was a risk manager for the Navy's Enterprise Resource Planning Program used by Navy worldwide with over 64,000 users, performing financial execution for the US Navy, a $1.4 billion program. I'm a former commissioner, Prince George's County Veterans Commission, serving accounting population of nearly a million people in the DC area. I'm also a director of a Fortune 500 company with an annual income of over $5 billion, providing engineering program management expertise to the US government. The leadership experience includes being a principal, leading my 30-person team in the design of the Navy's new US aircraft carrier, the $13 billion Gerald Ford. I have briefed the National Security Council in the West Wing Situation Room. I'm currently a principal for safety with the DDG 51-class of guided missile destroyers. That's over 89 ships at a cost of approximately $2.4 billion each. I'm only one of a handful of experts in the world who are authorized to certify to the Navy that these ships are safe to operate. I was the chief of mobility logistics for commanding multinational forces Iraq. I was the senior most official tasked with all logistics and mobility in the country, including all aircraft and trucks. I directed the tracking and ensured the timely arrival of five combat brigade teams that surged into Iraq. I was awarded the Bronze Star for my combat performance in enemy territory, and I've been tried twice in Military Times Hall of Valor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the questions for which you will have 30 seconds to answer. So Mr. Manzo will go first. And what in your experience, expertise, and personal characteristics qualifies you for the job you're seeking?
Thank you. I've been doing the job for the last three years. I have been the mayor. Background: Attorney, always passing laws. Construction: I've built stores around the country for Sony and Casio, multimillion-dollar stores. And finally, finance. I was a CPA. Still am a CPA and active, and have worked for one of the biggest audit firms in the world called Deloitte. When you put all of that together, it's the absolute stuff that you need to run a city. And I've proven that by running the city as well as it has been done in the last three years.
Thank you. Mr. Gaddis.
Yes. I have experience with managing people. I have experience with running a good ship and knowing how to treat people the right way. One thing that I am not good at is creating conflict where it's not necessary. I find efficient ways to get things done without having to create all of these problems that we've seen for the last three years. I believe we can do a much better job. I've been working on training for the last year.
Hi. Thank you. Same question. Mike Zabel. Over first.
Thank you.
Your experience, expertise, and personal characteristics.
Yeah, I've run in multi-million dollar projects. The biggest thing is make sure you give your team as much support as you possibly can. Back them up 100% of the way, and then get the hell out of the way. We have a city manager for our government. Let that govern the job.
Ms. Aki.
Well, my experience is I've been on council for two and a half years, so I'm currently doing the job. I'm used to hard work. I'm used to working with various personalities to get hard conflicts resolved. I have no problem bringing compromise and compassion, as well as excellent listening skills and willingness to listen to all of our citizens and all of their concerns. And no concern is too small as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts.
Yes, I have a very diverse and extensive engineering and consulting background. Looking forward to working with the city, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, to work with the projects of infrastructure and traffic control, things like that around our city that some people that I've talked to are concerned about a little bit. My management style is, as said before by somebody earlier, I love to tell people what needs to be done and why it needs to be done, and then get out of the way and let them do it. Thank you.
Linda Hathor Welch.
Hi. My background in finance, legal, and accounting will qualify me to be able to understand what's happening, to understand the ordinances and the law that goes behind them. My management style would be more of a team. I like to work with others and come to a solution, and also be someone who's willing to compromise and to work together to make this place that we live in better than it already is. Thank you.
And I apologize, Jody Shirley. Next.
So I have, I served three years on council. And since I was off council, I have served in an advisory committee position. I have the training with the League of Cities. Besides that, my site development experience and knowledge of infrastructure has been a world of helpful information to the city manager. And my management style is that we have a city manager who is our CEO, and I will let him manage.
Thank you. I apologize. I've gotten myself all tied in that too. But Shirley, Jody, Jody Shirley. Maybe next, which doesn't make sense. All right. Is there... Somebody, Mike Zabel, have you answered this question? Is there anybody who's not answered this question? Okay. Next question is, what is your position on undergrounding our city's utilities?
Sure. I agree with undergrounding only if the citizens want it. There's some neighborhoods that would want it and some neighborhoods that don't. In the case of Bellevue Island Estates, we got together and paid for it ourselves. And we were lucky to have the city manager to assist us with that task. If anyone wants that, then I recommend that they do a petition, and then we will speak with them about getting it done.
The same question. Mr. Manzo.
Yes, thank you. I actually agree with David Gaddis for once. Undergrounding is the purview of the citizens. I would never force it on any community, person, or any street. It's up to you. You're going to pay for it if you want it. It's approximately $25,000 to $30,000. Not everybody wants to spend that money to bury a wire. There's people on fixed incomes in this city, and I'm very cognizant of that. Everyone's not multimillionaires here. So only if you want it. But if you do want it and your street wants it, I certainly would approve it, being on the council.
Okay. Some of you have not answered that question.
I do. We have an agent.
Undergrounding?
Correct.
Mr. P.
I agree with both of the candidates for mayor. I think it goes street by street, area by area. If you want it, we'd be happy to help you get through the process. Like Mr. Gaddis said, we have some experience with the Bellevue Island Estates, so we know the process. So it would be a little bit of an easier transition if it's something that the street wants. But again, it would have to be by petition, and if it's something the citizens want, then we certainly support it.
Mr. Zabel.
Yes, absolutely, I agree. But I want to add, though, is you need to gather the people that are for this and try to achieve a contractual edge by basically purchasing in bulk, if you can. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes, thank you. I agree as well that it is a residence decision, so we could work closely and find out who wants it, who doesn't want it, and then I would feel comfortable working with the utility company and help everybody understand what's going to be involved.
Shirley.
I am very much in support of undergrounding the utilities. There, what no one mentioned is that we are still in the process of undergrounding the Thought Boulevard utilities, and all the funding is not there for that. So there's got to be funding sources sought after. Once we are able to complete that project, then I think it's a great idea to bring it into the city. And those streets where the residents want to participate, let's focus on those first, but continue to try to get funding, whether it's federal or local funding.
Has everyone answered that question? Ms. Welch.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm probably in favor of undergrounding the utilities for safety reasons and for the aesthetic. And I agree with everyone here that it needs to be done in a way that takes these citizens' wishes under advisement, and we do need to have the proper funding to do so. Thank you.
Finances. What do you know about our city's current financial status and what would you advocate to keep Bel Air Beach fiscally sound? And the mayoral candidates, would the, excuse me, Mr. Manzo will go first.
Thank you. So when I took office, the first thing that I did... Thank you. So when I took office, the first thing that I did, and some people fought me on this, was to put a finance committee together. We looked at every single facet of the city. We cut out some of the waste and inefficiencies, some of the bloated bureaucracy. We had people at the headquarters here that weren't doing enough for their work. So we'll continue to do that. What do I know about it? I'm CPA. I've sat through this thing three years in a row. I voted no on tax increases all three years. My opponent has voted yes. That's what I know about finances. I'll keep trying to save you money.
Yes, I did. I voted to maintain the military. And the reason why is because we have many capital projects that were not getting done. You look around, look at the stormwater drainage, look at the streets, things that are going on around our city, they're getting fixed. In the past, we weren't doing that. We were surviving on a rollback rate and nothing was getting done. So I'm happy with what's happened over the last three years.
Does everyone answer that one?
None of us have. All of us, we have not.
Just the mayor.
The five of us have not. Want me to go first again? Finances.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your problem. Finance.
I'm very well aware of the finances, being on city council. I've been reviewing the budget for the last three years, as well as the recommendations from the finance committee. I also know that many of our citizens are on a fixed income, so I don't always agree with raising the taxes if it's not necessary, but I also understand that sometimes it is. So I'm willing to make those decisions based on what's best for the city and what's best for the residents.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. I'm very familiar with developing and reviewing budgets in my previous occupations. So I look forward to, I have read the Bel Air Beach current budget, looked over each line item, and I look forward, if I'm elected, to sit down and review all of those again. And I'm all about continuous improvement, so if there's any line items that can be reduced and move money around to make better decisions for our city, I'll be in favor of that. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley, have you answered this?
No. So I'm currently on the advisory committee, and I completed the budget review in this last budget cycle. So I'm very familiar with the current financial situation in the city. Moving forward, I'd like to continue to seek new revenue sources rather than stay in the status quo of balancing the budget with strictly ad louran taxes. We, there are probably some opportunities for saving, and we kind of beat that to death in the budget review, but we're always open to looking at new opportunities.
Ms. Welch, have you answered the financial question?
No, I haven't answered the question. I haven't glanced over the budget. I haven't picked through it line by line. I feel like if I'm elected, I'll be something that I will dig into extensively. On its face value, I wouldn't really be in favor of raising taxes for the same reason that we have people on a fixed income, and I would be open to looking for new revenue sources to help find some of the things that we want to do here.
All right. Has everyone answered that one?
No.
Mr. Zabel?
I, yeah, obviously, you know, the data here, just going through, but what we're trying to do is basically take that budget, it's a finite amount. We are not a big company town that has plenty of businesses. But right now, we have capital expenditure projects, you know, listed by street. We're trying to divide it, work from the south, go into the north to make sure we have the best bang for frankly our limited budget.
I think you've answered this one. The next question. We've got lots of questions about this, coming in different forms, but it has to do with the Bel Air Beach relationship with Bel Air Shore and the umbrella issue. And do you have ideas for resolving that?
Yes, I would say the best idea would be to drop the current lawsuit and resume negotiations. This council, city council, agreed on July the 6th to allow our city manager to negotiate. By August the 3rd, it was abandoned because letters of intent had already been sent, which made them apprehensive and not want to talk to us anymore.
Thank you. Mr. Mansell?
You know, this is a real lawsuit tried by real lawyers in a real court, and Dave Gaddis is none of that. He's not going to settle or solve anything. You don't drop the lawsuit and start negotiations. That's what some citizen threw on a sign. You settle it, and then you drop the lawsuit. They've had their opportunity to settle five times. They've said no to us. They've thrown three-year-old children out into the sun to burn. I'm not going to let that happen. I'll try this case this next coming summer. I'll try this case in the public court, and I'll try it in the Supreme Court if I have to. I'm going to get your umbrellas back. Dave Gaddis can't do it.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, I have to agree with Dave on this one as well. I feel like we can sit down with people from Bel Air Shores and come to an agreement that's a win-win situation. I've heard many different options that have been talked about amongst us, and I think if we have the opportunity to sit down with Bel Air Shores, we can get to that win-win solution that will result in umbrellas on our beach. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
Yeah, so everything's not a Supreme Court question. There are things that can be negotiated at a local level, and I think this is one of those items that we can talk about and not be litigious about everything. But maybe sit down, have the conversation. We did have some proven response in a Zoom call that we had, but there was not enough time given to allow us to work something out before an intent to sue was already set.
Ms. Welch?
I'm in agreement with the mayor on this one. I feel like the time has come and gone through any kind of negotiations. They have taken our right to enjoy the beach that we were deeded, and I'm all for the litigation. In fact, I'm an intervener, and I'm a proud intervener, and I'm proud to support the mayor on this one.
Mr. Zabel?
Yes, I agree with Dave, but I got to tell you, with so many claims, you're going to take cases all the way to Supreme Court, means they're going to be losing all the way through the Supreme Court. It's only 35 people rolling on that case, 1,480. You've effectively taken away your right to fair representation. That beach is only half of the entire beach of Bel Air Beach. Thank you.
So negotiations were tried, and one thing I don't agree with is bullying tactics. I'm not, I don't play well with bullies, nor do I allow them to bully me. So when a bully pushes me, I push back. So I think that negotiations were tried, great ideas were brought from the citizens, such as towing zones, gates, all these things, and they were rejected. So do I think that, you know, jumping to a lawsuit is the first thing, but am I afraid of a fight? No, and I don't agree with other cities bullying us because they think they can.
Mr. Roberts?
I already answered.
Next question is much more general. What would you like to accomplish if you were elected? What would you like to accomplish or see accomplished in your term of office? And that would be... Mr. Mansell?
What I'd like to see accomplished is a council that's a little bit more in tune to what the right thing to do is. That means right by way of constitutional law. It also means what's right by way of common sense. Dave Gaddis wants to tell you what color you can paint your dock caps. That's absurd. That's government overreach. It's too much. We have a beautiful city. I want to keep it that way, but I'm not going to tell you what color you can paint your house. I want to see people working together, and I want to see a council that works together and does the right thing. They don't do that right now. They do what they think is politically correct.
Okay, so next, I'll be showing...oh!
Sure. What I'd like to see is a council that it can actually work together as a team. Right now, our council is broken. It's split right down the middle, and it's always turmoil and heartache with every single meeting. This should never happen in Bel Air Beach. We should be able to work together in work sessions and then come together with a consensus whenever it's time for regular council meetings.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley?
Yes, if I'm elected, I would like to bring back civility to these chambers and welcoming to our residents. Tonight, there are a lot of residents here, but if this was a regular council session, many of you wouldn't speak because you're afraid of being bullied by our current mayor. That has got to end. We need to change. I know I've sat out there in those council chambers and will not speak because of the response you get from the mayor and the council. We need civility. Divisiveness needs to end, and we need to come together as a community.
Thank you. Ms. Welch?
Yes, I agree that the divisiveness needs to end. I don't think the mayor is the one causing it. I think it started at Bel Air Beach with the umbrellas. I think they're the bully. I don't think he's the bad guy. I think he's really trying to help us, and I'd like to see a council that can work together. And to quote one of our citizens that got up last week, he said he'd like to see us try to get to guests every once in a while. And that's what I'd like to see, is that they wouldn't kick the ball down the road on a lot of issues and that they would work together and get some things done for the good of the city.
Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, return a non-threatening environment. City council meetings look welcome, don't threaten, definitely don't lecture the citizens. Make sure we review our strategic plan and stick to it. Priority, negotiate in good faith with the neighborhood and cities. And by the way, provide the city manager with all the tools and support they need to be successful. Don't hammer on them. Give them everything they need, succeed, back them fully, and let them run the day-to-day government.
Mr. P?
Yes, I'll continue doing what I have been doing, and the reason why I joined the council was to represent all citizens. When I first joined, I felt like the families weren't represented, and that's why I wanted to get on and make sure I was a voice for the unrepresented. I'm very big about compromise, so I'll continue to try to bridge those gaps between the two sides. I often feel like I went down the middle trying to bring them together. And I have, if you've been a council mate, you've seen me. I say it like it is. I will say it like it is. I don't sugarcoat. I don't dance around the issue. I say it like it is and get down to the bottom so we can fix it.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, thank you. What's been said a few times, the divisiveness does have to stop. And what's amazing to me is I still feel it happening right before my eyes tonight. It's insane. So it can be fixed, and you guys can fix it by who you vote for. Thank you.
All right, we've mentioned a number of pressing issues, but in order of priority, what are the pressing issues facing Bel Air Beach in the next few years? So what would you say are some of the top and most important issues? Mr. Gaddis?
Sure. The number one priority is to get the council working again. Right now, this council is stuck between rock and a hard place. We can't get along. We can't reach consensus. Nothing is moving forward. Once that's taken care of, I would like to address the Bel Air Shore problem. I don't think it's as big a problem as it's made into because we've made it, that problem. I think that we could work together and resolve this issue quickly and then move on with the regular general business.
Thank you. Mr. Mansell?
The most important thing is keeping our city the way it is right now, keeping the outside influences out of our city, the big businesses that my opponent embraces. The short-term rentals, the officials that he looks up to, all vote in favor of short-term rentals. Ed Hooper, Chris Lovella, and Nick DeCicli. Those are his supporters. They're not my supporters. I've spoken out against those people. I'm going to keep your city free of short-term rentals, and they got their eyes on that big acreage right by our marina. I'm going to make sure it doesn't get built. He'll build it. He's got three restaurants after him.
Thank you. Ms. Welch? The most pressing issues for Bel Air Beach?
I think this time of year, probably, traffic would be one of the things that we need to work on a little bit more. We need to continue to try to keep our community safe and keep it a place that people want to come to. I think we have a PR problem in the community. I think that this thing that we have going on has permeated, and everybody knows about it. So I think we have a lot of work to do to try to restore our reputation as a town that's not imploding from inside and work with our neighbors as well.
Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, I got to admit, last two meetings, we should be sticking to the strategic plan. Last two meetings were wasted, your time wasted chasing down parking passes and signs. First of all, get back to the strategic plan. Make sure we got plans here of eventual including flooding and get the funding for it. Thank you.
Mr. P?
I agree that we need to work on our council meetings and make them more cohesive. I think we definitely need to show more respect to each other and be willing to work and compromise. I think we need to start doing the basic works, which is continuing to work on the infrastructure and making it better in our city, continuing to work on our roads and the drainage problems. Traffic is always a big issue, and I think we need to try to focus on that. The light changes help, but we need to keep moving forward to make our city as beautiful and as accessible to all of our residents as possible.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. We do need to have a mayor and city council that do work together. Without that, we're not going to move very far. I've talked to people out in the city, knock on doors, and there's a large amount of people that do not attend the city council meetings because of how uncomfortable they are. That's a sad state of affairs. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
Yeah, so for me, the number one item we need to focus on is the strategic plan. We have fallen away, pushed that aside, and I don't think that's been looked at in the last three years. It's a priority. It's a list of how we plan to move forward. Additionally, I'd like to honor the city code and our government structure, which is not being honored right now. And the most important as we move forward is preparing for our city manager's retirement. That's going to happen very soon.
Ms. Welch, did you answer this one? And we will start with... Rising water levels, stormwater drainage, and flooding issues are significant concerns for Bel Air Beach. One of the first steps the city should take, and maybe if not just the first steps, but what's the long-range plan to deal with that? Mr. Gaddis? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mansell?
Okay, thank you. So I think the city's taken its first step already, which was to get a stormwater fee. I was not in support of the fee because it happened to be the highest in Pinellas County. I am in support of a fee, just not the highest in Pinellas County. We have $800,000 gift from Uncle Sam coming into this city. We haven't decided how to spend it. I would recommend that we spend it towards fixing up our stormwater, working on these check valves, and trying to stop as much flooding as we possibly can. Can never eliminate it. We live on an island, but we can do our best to stop it.
We live on an island, but we can do our best to stop it.
Mr. Gaddis?
Yes, we should continue to maintain what we have, yet continue with the upgrades that we need. Also, FEMA and Pinellas County make recommendations, and as new homes are being built, we should follow their recommendations so that not everyone is underwater, although the water does rise.
Yes, our city manager has already kind of labeled a plan based on the streets that are in most need and priority, so I think we should definitely continue to follow his guide. We do have the stormwater fee that is helping in that with some financial, so I think we need to keep going. We've done a lot of improvements so far, and I think we need to just keep the momentum going so that we can resolve this issue.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. Yeah, my background and experience is a perfect fit for this question. That's what I've dealt with for 20 years with Swift Mudd and the Department of Public Works for Bochum. So I would love to have the opportunity to work with the city manager and his team to improve the infrastructure and the stormwater issues that we currently have. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
Yes, I likewise have a pretty extensive background in storm systems, and we have, in the past, have this funding source put in place that helps us with the maintenance side of it. As being part of the advisory committee, we did recommend that $800,000 be used for the capital improvements of the stormwater, and we do have a capital improvements budget in place and have outlined how those projects will be funded over the term.
Ms. Welch?
I'm just happy we can all agree that the stormwater is something that we can bring out. So I think that's a good thing. I think that we do have a good plan, and I'm excited the fact that everybody up here is all on the same page about it and looking forward to, you know, hopefully not having problems after this hurricane.
Mr. Ziegel?
Yeah, when I was working with FEMA, basically, hope's not planning. This was. That's the capital expenditure people. That's street by street, trying to work toward a strategic plan and making sure that you're safe. You also got to work with neighboring communities. You had a hurricane here, you got a flood, you're going to work with everybody in the neighborhood. You better start making friends quick because we have to rely on each other.
Code enforcement has always been near the top of the list of residents' concerns in Bel Air Beach. What is your position on code enforcement and how should it be handled? Mr. Gaddis?
Yes, I believe that our code is what actually attracted us to Bel Air Beach. Unfortunately, I feel like our code is currently under assault by the current mayor. I believe that we should continue to enforce it and not just selectively say we're going to ignore code unless the council as a whole agrees to change that code.
Mr. Manzo?
I was the person who took code away from this city because it was being weaponized by our city manager. I heard nothing but complaints about how he was using it to intimidate citizens. It's now in the hands of Pinellas Sheriff, and when the city manager was trying to take it back in-house, I was the only one who stood up for him. Dave Gaddis was ready to bring it back in-house. I won that one because I supported the police and I brought it out and brought it back to the sheriff. Sheriff saved a life by doing code. Had nothing to do with wanting to worry about our lawns. Had to do with being aware of what was happening in our community.
Thank you. Code enforcement? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. It's been identified, we have a code that tells us what we're supposed to do and what we're not supposed to do. We have a code enforcement officer. We need to let that person do their job, and if the citizens of this city want any changes to our current code, then we should listen to them, evaluate it, and make whatever changes we think are correct. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley? I'm in support of code enforcement. We periodically have a code review committee that will review the entire code, and at that time, if we have changes that we see necessary to make, then I think it's that residents can get involved and be involved in making those changes. We do have laws on the books. We need to follow them. We can't change them at every meeting because we don't like what's being said. There's a process to change them, and we need to follow that process, which is outlined in our code.
Thank you, Ms. Welch.
I agree with Ms. Shirley that we can have a code. We need to follow it. I'm happy for our police officers to enforce the code so that there's an arbitrary... I think the code's benefit everybody, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ziegel?
Yeah, there's no need to say who wins. You know, that's divisive. We're trying to bring together. I mean, actually, look at that code enforcement right here. I believe the majority here is obviously weeds and lawns, so Master Chief, yeah? We got to make sure that your lawn's not getting weeds. We'll take care of it.
Ms. P.
Yes, right now, we have an excellent code enforcement with the Pinellas Sheriff, so I think we definitely can continue that. I think the codes are there for everybody, and they should be administered equally. And I also agree with my counterparts that, you know, sometimes the codes need to be changed, but there's a process to do it, and we need to respect and honor that process and, more importantly, work together as a team to make that happen for our citizens.
Thank you. And Mr. Roberts?
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Next question. Communication with citizens is really important, and what do you feel is the most effective way to communicate with all the citizens? Is it, do you agree that it's important? And that would be Mr. Manzo?
Communications is absolutely important. In fact, we had a communications committee, but sadly, some of the suggestions that came to that committee were ignored. Citizens said they didn't want a digital sign outside, and my opponent here spent $35,000 of your hard-earned money to stick a sign that looked like it belongs at a car wash. We're in 19th century or 20th century. It's time to get to the 21st century. Let's start using texts and all the other stuff. I've got better communications for my mayoral campaign than this city has, and that's pathetic for the amount of money we spend as a city.
Mr. Gaddis?
I beg to differ. Things have changed since I started working with a communication committee, and I did listen to the citizens. The sign was old. They wanted a new sign, even whenever the sign was gone, and it was a great debate. I listened to everyone, not just the people that came down here and were very vocal. I've heard nothing but compliments over that sign, and I'm very proud that I did it.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley?
Yeah, so I think communication is really important, and I find it interesting, the mayor, who won't return an email, he won't even use an email address, is talking about communication and how to like communicate. That aside, the sign's great, does great service for me. When I go by, I can see when the meetings are, I can see when the parks board is doing something, which I never had that feedback before. I'm always available by phone. I'm always available by email. I think communication's extremely important, and I encourage anyone to reach out to me that has a question. Thank you.
Ms. Welch?
I also think communication is very important. I'd like to see us set up a community resident portal so that we can communicate with each other and communicate with our city officials. I think that a portal-type situation, we could take a poll as to, you know, who might have wanted the sign or who didn't, and so that, you know, people don't wake up one day and they have a sign that I have never spoken to anybody that ever wanted the sign. So I think that we need better communication, clearly, but we also need to follow what the citizens want once that communication is put out there.
And Mr. Ziegel?
Yeah, yeah, I was on that communications committee. Got the thing right here. Basically, look, I don't lecture. You guys got this? I'm really approachable. I'll work with everybody. That's communications, not lecturing, not intimidating, not bullying. Got to work with people.
And Ms. P.
Yes, I'm all in favor of communication with the citizens. I've always been available by email, cell, text. You guys are always welcome to call me. I'm all about the website. There's a great tool for finding out what's going on, so I think communication's very important, and we should definitely do whatever we can to open it more with the citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. Yeah, there's plenty of technology out there that can take care of communication problems or at least enhance them. In addition to that, I've enjoyed the sign, the old sign when I used to drive by. I think once I almost hit City Hall trying to read it, not being able to. So there's a lot of opportunity out there. I have seen other cities that offer, like, meet the council for lunch, and I agree with Mike. I think the face-to-face is a beautiful thing, so I would personally try to set something up like that, where it would be open to the citizens to maybe put lunch somewhere and charge it to the city, I'm sure.
What is the best way to preserve the Bel Air lifestyle without imposing commercial activity within our community? And that would be... Mr. Gaddis?
Great question. Primarily, maintain our code. Don't change a thing. We have a beautiful environment, and we've got great neighbors, and more than anything, we just need to get the council calmed down so that we're not fighting amongst ourselves.
Mr. Manzo?
Yeah, I'm going to keep the beach in Bel Air Beach. That's why I moved here. That's why my house is worth what it's worth. Take my house and move it to Largo, it's worth 50% of it. And when people start taking away our beach rights is the time that they start to get me annoyed. I'm going to continue to fight to keep our beach rights for all of our citizens. And no, they don't want to negotiate. They've already said it. They said they'll listen, but they will not change their mind. Mr. Gaddis can't do a thing for you. I'm your only hope on that one.
Any questions? Can you repeat the question, please? Yes. What is the best way to preserve the Bel Air lifestyle without, I guess, Bel Air Beach lifestyle, without imposing commercial activity within our community? Thank you, Ms. Welch.
I'd like to see us get back to a situation where, as a community, we do things together. We maybe have some days that we volunteer as a group, that we get out away from Bel Air Beach, but we get out as a community and show that we are unified and that we are friends and that we care about other people other than ourselves and that we're just not sitting here on this beautiful stretch of beach, turning our noses up at everybody else. I want us to be a community that other people can be proud to be associated with.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ziegel?
Yeah, when the mayor talks about beach, remember, Bel Air Beach, two months. Bel Air Shore is one. So basically, half of it. Look, beach cleanup, we were there this weekend. Love it. Love getting together with everybody. Next, I have never met as friendly as people when I'm out walking the dog. Bloody people. Look, reach out there, block parties, enjoy your neighbors. That's why we moved here and basically also code enforcement. I agree with Dave.
Ms. P.
Keep a safe beach environment for all so we can all enjoy it. That's one of the reasons many of us moved here, was for access to the beach and safety while there. We're a very residential community. We don't have much commercial influence. I can't see that happening in the future and hope never to see that happening. And just, I like the idea of more events together, more community events would be great to get the citizens interacting with each other more.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. I did participate with my lovely wife back there in the back with the beach cleanup, and it was a good time. And I tell you, I was surprised at how clean the beach was when we started. So I think the monthly beach cleanups we have are working well, and that's a good thing. The block party was also great for us. We moved in, we were there probably about two months, and I'm sure it wasn't for me necessarily, but we had a block party, and we had a chance to meet everybody, and it was awesome. So those helped a bunch. Thanks.
Ms. Shirley?
Yeah, I think our community is great. It's a great beach community. We have access to all the beaches. I would say we just continue to live the way we do. Everyone in my neighborhood is out walking. We're all neighbors. We know each other by name. We stop, we talk, we have dinner together, we have wine together. We have a great group. Our Parks Committee is doing an incredible job bringing people together. They have quite a few events on the board and just continue down that path.
Ms. Welch? Are you an advocate for changing our existing rental ordinance? And that would be, what candidate? Mr. Manzo?
No, absolutely not. We don't do short-term rentals here, and if you want to see how bad it is, go to Indian Rocks. They got houses that turn over 40 times a year. Problem is, is that people that support my opponent, Nick DeSigly, Ed Hooper, and Chris Lovella, do support that. They voted for it every single time it came up in Tallahassee. We've got to keep that influence out. I spoke out publicly against Nick DeSigly. He's got to take money from them. That's the difference between us. I'll keep it out of their city. He'll bring it in.
I remember a day whenever I saw an endorsement from Joseph Manzo for Nick DeSigly. Once he was named in a lawsuit by his significant other, his name was pulled quickly off of DeSigly's website, so I don't want to hear the double standard. No, I am not for short-term rentals in Bel Air Beach.
Yes, I'm not in favor of short-term rentals. That's all. I don't talk very much, so.
Ms. P.
I'm also not in favor of short-term rentals. I don't want an Airbnb overturning every weekend next to any of us, so I'm definitely against short-term rentals.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. That is one of the things that actually tipped me towards Bel Air Beach, was the fact that they do not have short-term rentals, so I am completely against short-term rentals.
Ms. Shirley?
So I purchased my home in a residential community because I want to live in a residential community. As soon as you allow short-term rentals, you turn that house next door into a commercial property. It becomes a hotel. I am absolutely against short-term rentals and Airbnbs in our community. And that, I would say that for the condos as well, although somehow they keep getting away with it.
I didn't get a chance to answer, but I'll weigh in, and I'm absolutely opposed to having any kind of short-term rentals. I'm agreeing with everybody here. No short-term rentals.
Would you be open to changing our golf cart ordinance to allow travel on our streets? Mr. Gaddis first?
Well, you got to be on that one. I'm not sure what our golf cart ordinance is. However, I see golf carts riding around in Bel Air Beach.
Mr. Manzo?
You know, we allow them, I think, right now if they're licensed. I have no problem as long as there's license and a means of tracking them. I'll go back to something that Dave Gaddis said. I've never supported Nick DeSigly. Whoever put that up, there wasn't me, and since the state law requires that to be in writing, Mr. Gaddis, I'll be reaching out to Nick DeSigly tomorrow to ask for the copy signed by Nick, so either you're lying or he's lying. And I think it's you, Dave. You're a liar. Stop lying.
Yeah, I'm a day honest, but I really don't know what our code ordinance says about DC golf carts. So, as long as they're safe and street legal, then I have no problem with that one.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. I really didn't have much thought about it until the other day I was actually speaking to a resident, and while we were standing there, a golf cart, a larger golf cart, came zooming by, and he complained that that happens way too often, and they're, in his opinion, they were kinda dangerous because you don't really see it in time because it doesn't make a lot of noise. So, I see where it could be an issue, but I don't have a strong opinion on it either way. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
I don't know what our code is on golf carts, but if it's a street legal vehicle, which many of them are, most of them are, I own an electric car that is open-air gem, and it is, I guess, many would consider it a golf cart, but it's street legal, it's licensed, it's got insurance, and I have a parking pass for it. So, it's my beach buggy, and yes, I am in complete support of using those, especially for all of you that think you wanna be green. It's a good addition.
Ms. Walsh?
I'm in support of the golf cart ordinance, if there is one, don't have any problem with golf carts. But if we allow the golf carts and those are street legal, does that mean we're okay with the buggies that come down from Clearwater and Drag Race on our streets? So, I think we need to maybe look at that somehow when we're visiting these street legal cars because they actually, this time of year, do run through our neighborhoods for sport, and I'm not on board with that.
Mr. Zabel?
Uh, yeah, obviously, as long as they're street legal. Gotta gotta apologize. I mean, seeing, you know, two grown men coming to other liars. But I'll tell you, it's, if we do these beach buggies, Jane, am I allowed to buy one? I would love to do that, so. Oh, well, crap. Oh, well, hey, guys, I tried. Thanks.
Something that's really important, I think, to residents of Bel Air Beach is beach access. So, how can you, what are your thoughts about protecting the beach access for residents of Bel Air Beach? And is it Mr. Manzol first?
Can I just clarify the question? You speak about the beach access to Bel Air Shore or to Bel Air Beach?
Mr. Gaddis?
No, I'm sorry. I'm trying to clarify your question. Are you, are you speaking about the access to Bel Air Shore or Bel Air Beach? There's two separate beaches, that is.
Residents of Gulf of Mexico Beach or, or residents of Bel Air Beach.
Perfect, got it. So, Bel Air Beach, everyone's welcome. Come and enjoy our beach. There's no prohibitions. We don't want your children to get skin cancer. But Bel Air Shore, yeah, we have problems with the beach access. We've got legally deeded access to that beach, and unfortunately, little by little, they're taking it away from us. Take a look at the sign. There's a four-foot sign of stuff you can't do. Previous administrations, previous mayors have just rolled over and given it all to them. I'm the first person to stand up and fight for your rights. I'm gonna keep fighting, make sure we keep that beach access. That's what makes Bel Air Beach, Bel Air Beach.
Mr. Gaddis?
And I believe that we should continue to work on negotiations with Bel Air Shore. Keep poking the bear, and what they're gonna do is they're going to ruin our interlocal agreement, and we won't have a parking lot on those accesses. I don't think that that's what any of us want. We'd like to be able to continue using those accesses and park our cars there. I don't wanna see them as grass lots.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. Boy, I keep winning the lottery. It goes without saying, everybody wants beach access. I do as well, and if elected, I'll do everything possible to work towards that end. I'm very fortunate. Where we live, it's just across the street to get to the beach, and we go through the Nineteenth Street parking area, and there's also another access you can just walk through on the other side of the motel. So, I love the beach access, and we definitely fight for that. Thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
Yeah, so, we have access to the beach from the north to the south, and I would continue to support keeping access available. It's not, it's not an issue at the moment, and I don't foresee it being an issue unless we continue down the path of threatening suits and taking things to the Supreme Court.
Ms. Walsh?
I think the beach access is one of our greatest amenities. I think it's why people move here. Certainly was why I got here. And I appreciate the mayor's efforts to try to protect that on all of our behalf, even if it does mean going to the Supreme Court. It's not gonna hopefully get that far, but, you know, this is, this thing is already on the track, and it's, it's not really, I don't think, negotiable at this point. But, you know, we can all hope. Thank you.
Mr. Zabel?
Uh, yeah, like I said before, look, that was not a strategy. Never go to a lawsuit. That's a lawsuit for, that's like the war. You save that for the last. But, you know, talk about the beach. I like to see kayak access, paddleboard access to the inland water. Beautiful area, dolphins, everything else, and I think some people would support that. Thank you.
Mr. Keith?
I'm all for maintaining our beach access and our ability to go to all our parking lots with our beach stickers and maintaining Morgan Park, so I'm definitely all about the beach. I enjoy it with my kids. My mother always takes my kids to the beach when I'm working, so it's a great access for all of us, and it's one of the reasons why we're all here.
Okay. I would like to thank the audience and all the candidates for having a very civil discussion this evening. And it's now time for the one-minute closing comments. It will be in reverse order of reopening comments. For the mayoral candidates, Mr. Manzol will go first for the one-minute time.
Thank you, everyone in Bel Air Beach. Thank you, League, for hosting this. Thanks for coming out and taking the interest in our city. I've had the privilege of being your mayor for the last three years. We've made great strides, and I continue to hope that I will have that opportunity to protect our city, protect your beach accesses, and try and keep the city on the right course. It's not just about being nice and playing nice. It's about getting stuff done. And sometimes it's tough to be the mayor and have to say no to people. That's just the way it is when you're the top person in the city. I'll continue to fight for the citizens, continue to fight for your rights, and I will never give in to another city. Never. I work for Bel Air Beach. I work for the citizens of Bel Air Beach. You're my only priority. You've never seen me taking pictures of Robert Schmidt, taking money from Robert Schmidt, the mayor of Bel Air Shore, when three-year-old children are being thrown into the hot sun to get skin cancer. They woke up and passed this ordinance, not us. They started the fight. I'm gonna finish it, and I'm gonna win it for you. Thank you, and I hope to continue for three more years.
Mr. Gaddis?
My name is Dave Gaddis, and I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. In this upcoming election, you will be given two choices. One is to continue going down the same path of threats, intimidation, and lawsuits that produce little to no positive outcomes. The other choice is to put your trust in a leader who is capable of negotiating with our neighbors and will work closely with the council to identify real problems for our city, search for workable solutions, and as a team, reach genuine consensus. For most of you, I believe that you've already made your decision. For the rest of you, I'd like to ask that you consider what is not only best for you, but also what is best for our city. That's why I'm asking for your vote. It's been an honor speaking with you tonight. Thank you so much for coming out, and have a good night.
Okay, the council candidates in reverse order. We'll start with Mr. Zabel.
Sure. Thank you very much for everybody coming out. If you do anything tonight, look, vote for Dave Gaddis. Say there, hey, definitely vote for me. But I wanna draw attention to Mr. Lynn Reeves. You here tonight? Someone back there? Lynn's a fellow combat veteran. I just wanted to draw attention to him. He served two tours in Vietnam. The man was shot down behind enemy lines. He has thirteen air medals, and the nation's fourth highest award for valor, like I have, the Bronze Star. I just wanna thank him on behalf of the SEAL, UDT, and Combat Craft Community for rescuing our team members and making sure we leave no man behind. Thank you.
Ms. Walsh?
Hi, thank you for coming out. Certainly, I'm not the most qualified person to be here. I'm not the smartest person sitting up here or the most established or decorated. However, I'm just an ordinary citizen like you all. I came here for a good life at the beach and was very disappointed in what I encountered. I apologize for it, but I'm definitely Team Joe all the way, and I appreciate his efforts to lead our city. I appreciate a legal mind and the acumen that he brings to the job, and I think that's what you need to get this city moving forward. Looking forward to a changing of the council, whatever that is. I think that anything that happens here will be an improvement. And I would appreciate your vote, but if not, good luck, and, you know, I think everybody has the same goal that they want Bel Air Beach to be a wonderful place, and it will be. That's just how we get there is the thing. So, thank you and God bless.
Shirley?
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for putting us on. I appreciate your time and residents for attending. It's been a pleasure. I, again, just wanna thank everyone, and I am looking forward to potentially serving, again, for the city. I previously was on council and got involved because I wasn't being heard, and I felt like there was a real lack of communication with residents. And after three years, it felt better. Things were getting better. We were communicating well. Now, we're back to the worst I've ever seen. I've lived in this city for twenty-two years. I've never seen the amount of hostility and meaning that I see today. And I hope that we can change that through this election and change the path with the council members and mayor. Thank you again for everything you've done and your participation. Have a good evening.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and all the residents that came out tonight, even though this is the football championship night, which I think we're still gonna make, so that's great. I currently play softball with the Indian Rocks Beach Senior Softball. My wife will tell you that's a mistake because the first day I played, I got severely injured, but I had recovered. I met two gentlemen there in the league that are actually Bel Air Beach residents. So, I started campaigning to them. We got to know each other better, and last week, they said, hey, boy, come on over and put a sign on your yard. I said, beautiful, I'm there, so I did. And that same time, and one guy looked at me and said, you know what? I'm voting for you, boy. I said, no, I don't. Is I a good hitter, maybe? He said, nope. He said, I really think you care. I said, wow, thank you. And I really do care, and I'm retired as well, so I have a lot of time to work hard for this city, which I will do, and I also support Dave Gaddis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keith?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, the League of Women Voters. If I'm reelected, I'll continue to work hard. I'll continue to work with all council members, willing to compromise to find a solution. I think every problem has a solution. You just gotta put the work in and find the compromise. We need to, on our council, drop the egos, drop the personal attacks, drop the personal opinions of each other, and just get together and work and do what we need to do for the community. I have no problem doing that. I wanna work with, continue to work closely with the city manager and have him help guide and lead our city. And I feel what I bring to the council right now is, sometimes, it's a voice of reason, a voice of common sense, a voice of, let's just get this done and resolve our conflict. So, if I'm reelected, I'll definitely continue to do that and to continue representing all residents of all ages. Thank you.
And I think everybody here should give themselves a round of applause.
Again, the election is March fifteenth. Make sure that you are registered to vote. You have to do that before February fourteenth, and you can request absentee. It's not an absentee ballot anymore. It's a vote-by-mail ballot, and so, make those requests. And please participate on election day.